Call to order this work-study meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. I would ask that Kirk please call and roll.
Ellison.
Here.
Strife, Oji.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan, here. Daniels?
Here.
All right, thank you. We'll move into our first discussion, item B1, presentation of presale report related to upcoming issuance of facilities maintenance bonds. Mr. Walden.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck. There were two facilities strategies or two facilities funding strategies that were identified by the facilities committee to improve, excuse me, facilities improvements identified by the facilities committee. The first was voter-approved general obligation school building bonds. Those were approved by taxpayers on November 5th of 2019. And the second were facilities maintenance bonds for eligible long-term facilities maintenance projects. Both of these strategies were included in the original tax impact of the 2019 bond referendum. At this time, the district is issuing general obligation school building and facilities maintenance bonds. The first step in the process occurred at the August 14th, 2024 school board meeting, when the board approved the resolution of intent to issue general obligation school building and facilities maintenance bonds, Series 2024A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $42,835,000. To guide us through that sale process, tonight is Shelby McQuaid, who is Senior Municipal Advisor and Managing Director at Ellers Public Finance Advisors. And Ms. McQuaid will walk us through the presale report. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. You've done quite a few pieces of this already, beginning in August when you approved that resolution, and we're well into the sale process already with this just being sort of an update of what we expect market conditions to be. And so, you have two authorities out there, the facilities maintenance and then the school building bond. We're going to combine them for just efficiency in cost of issuance, but also as you get those bigger block sizes, those bigger amounts of payoff of principal each year, you have more interest from the market that they can sort of get into one and have a lot of their investment taken care of. So, as an aggregate, there's $42,835,000 of authority. I think the big issue or the big pieces here, your both are portions of the tax levies, so the LTFM and the school building bonds, and all has been kind of coordinated since the passage back in 2019 of that increase. And we've been targeting that level tax rate over time and fitting in all these other pieces. So, though we've issued different parts of the bond over time, it's always been under that initial increase that was approved by the voters in 2019. Like all of your other issues, you will be able to call this bond and that they're shorter terms and, but we do have a calling in there. So, we won't be ending, I guess, the process with all of the issuance of the school building bonds. After a series of years, we'll be back and possibly refinancing or refunding those if the market is appropriate for that. We've already begun the rating process and had that rating call, and we'll just be receiving that rating upcoming. And so, thank you for the participation of Tim, Andy, and Wade in that rating call. I think we got everything we needed over to S&amp;P for them to make their assessment on the district's underlying rating. But you'll also carry that AAA credit enhanced rating from the state. I think overall, I just, you know, if you have this in front of you or if you don't, I can hold up the image of the overall debt plan that we're trying to fit everything in, keeping in mind that the gray is all the existing debt and fitting in all of the other pieces, including some future facilities maintenance bonds, in addition to the one incorporated here, as part of this issuance and the remaining $13 million. So, we do anticipate an interest rate for, given current market conditions of 3.39 on the facilities maintenance and technically speaking, 3.38 on the school building bond portion. We're also anticipating a premium, so the market then would pay you additional for the purchase of your bonds. And so, all of that gets figured in. And then, we'll be back on April 8th, which is the day of sale, when we'll know the actual results and make sure it fits in with the levy that you approved in September that was part of the debt levy and making sure that you have enough available as part of your project costs. So, that's kind of overall. I don't have to go into too much more detail unless you have any specific questions on any part of the issuance or the overall capital facilities plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McQuaid? All right. Thank you so much for your work.
Formal action would just be the update of the 10-year plans.
Okay.
Yep, that will happen later tonight.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks Shelby.
All right. Our next discussion, item B2, is a teaching and learning update, instructional leadership and literacy. Ms. Mueller or Mr. Minier?
Thank you Chair Ellison and Mayor, members of the board, and Dr. Kazmercheck. We're excited to come on back and talk again about literacy. I'm Cynthia Mueller, Principal and Special Assignment and District Literacy Specialist.
I'm Matt Minier. I'm the Principal of Willow Lane Elementary.
And what we're going to go over this evening is actually part of a presentation that Matt and I had the opportunity to do at the Minnesota Elementary School Principals' Association Conference back in February. And then, Dr. Allison Gillespie and I also did a version of this at the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. And so, it's really exciting things for us to share and an opportunity to talk about the work that we continue to do and especially from that angle around instructional leadership. But what we're going to start with is actually some really exciting pieces around student results. We're going to go back and forth between some district data and then also Willow Lane Elementary data. And then, the later portion of our presentation, we will just talk about what are all the things that we've been working on in terms of instructional leadership, principals, instructional coaches, and teacher leaders.
Yeah, so as Cynthia and I presented at MESA, this is one of the first slides that we showed, and we wanted to kind of get a gauge of the room. And so, we did not put up Willow Lane. They didn't know what this building is, but we wanted to make sure that we were very clear about what the demographics are of a school like Willow that is racially identified, isolated, and then begin to have them talk about what some of the outcomes might be for a school like this. And so, you heard a lot of the, you know, same things of lower socioeconomic and potentially depressed reading scores, so on and so forth. And so, as we progressed through that, we then were, we were able to not only show that results can happen in an elementary school like Willow, which we're starting to see, but then as a district as well, like where are we going and how did we get there? So, that was kind of the basis of this talk. It really spurned from something that I was a part of and that many of our principals are, and it's a credit to the district leadership and the school board for sending some of our principals to Minnesota Principals Academy, which I was a part of. When I first started at Willow, I didn't know a lot about early childhood reading and what that, I wanted kids to read to learn. I didn't know much about how to learn to read, right? And so, I had to do a lot of homework myself. Minnesota Principals Academy helped me with that, and it's become a passion area of mine and something that I feel like I've grown in my skills as a result of that. And so, this is, you know, a lot of help and a lot of work from the district and from Willow. So, that was kind of like, we wanted to frame Willow in this thing, but we also wanted to highlight some of the tremendous work that's being done from the district perspective. So, the first slide Cynthia can speak to.
Yeah. So, we're going to go through a series of data, student outcome data, and we're going to focus on kindergarten. The reason we're going to focus on kindergarten is, one, this is the, yes, early childhood is the very beginning stages, but when we talk about K-5, the beginning stages of reading development. Our kindergarten teachers were the first group of educators to complete letters training. And then, as you know, this is our first year of implementation of a new curriculum. So, we're really starting from the ground up and really looking at these results. So, this first set of data is around our screening assessment results. This specific sub-test is called word segmenting, which is a measure of phonemic awareness, a highly predictive skill of future reading success. On the left side, the two columns you can see, that was last year. And you can see overall as a district, we did, you want to see obviously lots of green, which means that those students are considered low risk for future reading failure. So, you can see we were decreasing our risk level for students. Already in the winter, we have already achieved what we did the spring of last year. Even more excitingly, when we talk about multi-tiered systems to support, RTI, oftentimes they're looking for your core instruction to be effective. Eighty percent of the students should be scoring low risk or in that green area. And I'm really excited by these results because I honestly can say it's one of the first times in my career where I've truly seen that RTI pyramid or MTSS pyramid.
When we show something like this, and Cynthia and I have, you start, to other districts, other principals, you start to see like, right, you can just see like, that looks like exactly what we're looking for. And so, to be able to see this in a, it's been a long time, but it's been a fairly short amount of time, right? Our kindergarten teachers are done with letters, right? So, they're, they've done their learning and we've implemented a new curriculum. And again, curriculum isn't like the NLV all of things, but we have a very coordinated, concentrated effort on what we know needs to take place in order for kids to move in their reading deficiencies. And so, you know, we're going to keep kind of flipping back and forth between the district and Willow here. And so, this is the same metric that we were looking at. And so, I just wanted like, again, be clear about what we're looking at, that here is the, the results that you see on the left-hand side is kindergarten 22 to 23, right? So, at the beginning of our 22, 23 school year, we said, that's where we're at. And by the time that we got to winter of last year, we had students at 50, what was it? Fifty, yeah, I need glasses, 57%. And so, that's a nice jump from fall to winter last year. But if you look at where we are now, we are, you're going to hear a lot of this, right? We're already to where we are in the spring in the winter, right? So, we, I don't know what spring is going to bring for us, but I know that we are going to be higher than 58% low-risk students at Willow by the time that we get to our spring assessment.
So, the next measure again is a subtest in our kindergarten. It's nonsense words, so this is where students read words that are nonsense. And it's really a measure of their decoding ability, and it uses nonsense words. So, to really kind of separate out, does that student already have that word known by sight? And so, again, as you can see, last year, winter to spring, we did decrease the risk level. And then, already in the winter of this school year, we have already met the spring results that we had last year.
Similarly, you're going to see where our Willow students come to us at the beginning of the school year. So, there's again, 22, 23, the beginning of the school year. We grew them to 39% middle of last year. And we had to do some, we had to have some pretty hard conversations of, this is still, it's good growth, but it's still unacceptable, right? And we are all on the same page. And so, I was proud of the work that my staff did in order to get our kindergarteners last year, now our first graders, up to speed. But now, if you take a look at what we're seeing in this time this year, like, we've far exceeded that by January, right? So, we also have to remember that as kindergarteners, nonsense words are very important because it's the skill that they are going to hit the most hard in first grade. And so, if I can hand off kindergarteners that are already doing nonsense words type skills, then we don't have to work backward to like, okay, finally in November, we can get them to where they, like, by the end of September, we can get them to where they should be so that we can continue to progress.
And so, finally with the set of data, so now, this is the early reading composite results. So, kindergarten and first grade students take a series of sub-tests, and then those sub-tests combined to a composite score. The subtests carry different weights, so the nonsense word or word segmenting being one of them. But overall, what's exciting to see in this is that continued decrease in risk level of our students. Went back a couple of years, and you can see historically from fall to winter in our composite scores, we've actually increased risk level. And now, this school year, we are decreasing risk level. So, then for Willow.
So, one of the things that you see in the area that's shaded with the Bears logo, one of the things that's kind of odd, you'd say, well, if they started in the fall of '21, '22, and then they go to the winter, like, Matt, why did they not, like, what happened? Why are they, why is there so much more red than they were at the beginning of the school year? Part of the problem or part of the just realization is the skills that they are tested on in the fall are not necessarily the skills that they're tested on in the winter, right? So, it's a whole different set of tests that we're doing on these students. And so, that's why when we take a look at this composite, then what are we actually trying to see here? And so, that's why I think when you take a look at the middle portion of this, the 41 to 18% last year, and then this year, you look at 41 or 44, thank you.
Yep.
And we like stayed steady, like, think about how much we decreased, you know, that ability over that time, like, we stayed steady. That is huge because now we can, we can continue to grow them. And again, we'll see what we'll see in the spring, but I can guarantee you, it's going to look much different than it has in years past.
So, now I want to just talk about and highlight some of the ways that we went about this work and achieving these results for students. So, really this journey, this really focused journey began back in 2018. Terry Dollum, I give her a lot of credit around this, the former principal at Onika Elementary. We were in a principals' meeting, and she was just like, we're looking at our student results, and she's like, we can't be okay with this. We can't be okay with this. And we weren't. And so, it was really kind of lighting that fire of what are we going to do and creating that sense of urgency. And so, from there, we really, we created and focused on instructional leadership. We really believe in the power and importance of a principal and their instructional leaders. So, we focused our efforts and teams around that. And then, in '21 to '24 is where we took an even more focused effort around teacher professional learning and administrative professional learning, as well as our ELA curriculum review. So, when we presented this at MESA and MASA, it was really around talking about our approach. And when Matt and I reflected on what are all the things that we've done as a system to develop instructional leadership, what was really amazing is to see how much of this is actually grounded as well in the academic literature around evidence-based practices for instructional leadership. So, what Matt and I did is just kind of put it together in a package that we could present out and talk about with other leaders across the state. So, there were six key pieces for us in this journey that now we're going to walk through and give you a little bit of information about.
And so, you know, you can see the six areas that we are looking into. And so, we're going to go through each one of those very briefly for you, but building that coalition of what does it look like to have everybody aligned and what they need. And so, that really does take the principals to know their stuff. And so, I admitted, you know, in my spot of vulnerability, like, what is phonemic awareness? I know what it is. So, I needed to.
He does now.
I needed to like educate myself. And so, being a part of big and small PD, it was really important for me, or I've sought out opportunities to learn more about this. Our instructional coaches are so critical to providing support, doing research, teaching lessons, guiding, data talks, they're just instrumental. And then, our teaching and learning department has really coalesced around making sure that we have what we need. And so, that includes lots of instructional leader teams and identifying PLLs in our building to be able to like move this initiative forward. And then, you know, like, we have to also give credit to the fact that our early childhood coordinators have done letters learning themselves. And so, they've been a part of this as well. And so, building that team and collaborative learning and then building up our collective efficacy has really been important. At Willow, you know, it's a lot of the same stuff, but I have had to, I have had to say to our staff, like, we are all reading teachers. Our playground teachers are teachers. Our cafeteria staff are teachers. And so, there's more to it than just, you know, reading. It is about us making sure that kids have a safe and welcoming and learning environment. And so, we've had to do a lot of planning with our site team, with my support staff. I do believe that BAR being a part of this, it has been a helpful benefit to our building in the way that we talk about kids. And I believe that kids now are seeing themselves as learners. But that's taken a very coordinated effort from a lot of leaders within my building. And so, I don't take a lot of that credit. I just want to make sure that people are aligned to what our vision, what our goal is.
Speaking of vision, so early on in our building of our coalition and a sense of urgency, we also really carved out what is it that we want to guarantee for our students? And so, this was the development of our elementary literacy vision, and I'm fairly confident that every elementary educator.
Can I paraphrase? They can probably mostly say it, but they can.
Mostly say it, yes. It has just been so much a part of what we talk about, and even that word guarantee has really become a focus of our work, that we are guaranteeing this for every one of our students. And so, even, go ahead to the next one, we called out, what do the terms in our vision mean? So, again, it's a responsibility placed on us, to our community and to our students. And so, this has really been our kind of phrase throughout all of this work.
And what I appreciate about that vision, I'll go back to it, is this was, again, done collectively, not, this wasn't like Cynthia saying, okay, well, here's what our vision is. It was a very collaborative, it started off here, it finally got to like here, and then the definition of, like we said, to guarantee something, well, what does that guarantee actually mean? And so, I think that was really critical to clearly define that so that when we have talks in the buildings or at the district level, we can point back to our vision. It's very clear, it's very definitive.
We've also had to identify and remove those obstacles or barriers, which sometimes to each his own. But really collectively as a group, for example, a couple of things I want to highlight, instructional schedules, is even just really being committed to ensuring these are the number of instructional minutes students will have in literacy. Another thing, credit to district leadership and our school board, is that prioritizing literacy professional development days. You know, we had to kind of swap out some student contact days to really focus on letters, professional learning to fit that in. That was an amazing gift to be able to, that was absolutely critical for us to be able to complete letters with almost 200 educators now. Collaboration is a really key piece. It's, we can't do this on our own. So, we were being really intentional about creating structures and really structures across the district. Every quarter, we sent out a survey to elementary educators around our implementation of our new curriculum. And I was reading through their responses today, and one of the things that really stood out to me is how much they value that cross-district collaboration. We're doing it virtually because that challenge of, you know, that after-school time, but we're making it work virtually, and they are really valuing that so that they can lean on each other, learn from each other. Being data-driven, so it's great to set goals, but you got to monitor those goals. So, as you saw here, FastBridge, those were the screeners, screening data. We anxiously look at those results when they come out during those benchmarking periods, but we're also doing a lot more progress monitoring, especially of our students that are in those risk levels as they're completing interventions, progress monitoring, looking at rates of improvement, building our data literacy. And then, I know BAR is a key piece.
Yeah, I want to just touch on that. So, for instance, what you were talking about with progress monitoring, that has become a very useful and utilized tool in our building. And so, you know, we met in about late January, we're starting to have six-week progress monitoring check-ins, and we really clearly identified where our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students are. And to see the rate of improvement on words read per minute or what have you, whatever the metric is, is amazing. I could talk to you guys all night, but it, like, we're seeing people, you know, you're supposed to grow at a rate of about 1.2 words per minute per week. We have kids that are reading like seven extra words per week in the six-week time. Like, so, we are, we are moving kids very quickly, and it's also a result of BAR and how we are talking about kids. We're talking about them both from a social and emotional aspect, but then we also talk about them from an academic standpoint. When we come together as educators, we're just more skillful, we're more powerful, we come up with solutions in a much more timely way for us to be able to then give the interventions or strategies for those students in order for them to succeed.
And then, finally, this one says, develop your literacy knowledge, again, based on the presentation we were giving to school administrators. It's really important, and this is also a basis in the academic literature, is that as a leader, you have to have a solid base of foundational knowledge around literacy and how someone learns how to read. That's how you can engage in those conversations with educators. You can give them precise feedback, you can ask questions. Principals make a lot of decisions in their building, instructional schedules, professional development time, and so, really having that foundational knowledge around literacy. So, for us, you know, we completed letters for administrators, all of our administrators went through that. Some of our administrators have completed the full letters course as well. We also lean heavily on the What Works Clearinghouse Practice Guide, those come out of the Institute for Educational Sciences. And we meet bi-weekly, principals and instructional coaches and teaching and learning to really talk through this together as instructional leaders, to problem solve together, to get ideas, and support one another.
And most recently, we just did a survey for our teachers with CKLA, for instance, and just had them self-assess, like, where are you? This should be kind of a three-year rollout process in terms of implementing the curriculum with fidelity. And I would say that the vast majority of our educators are already kind of in year two of what they're doing. You know, some, some areas may still be like, we're just, we're starting to get things rolling, but I would say that, you know, for the most part, we're doing it with fidelity. We are, we are very mindful of making sure that if we have 120 minutes of curriculum instruction for K through 3, that they are doing 120 minutes of curriculum instruction. It's been a change in practice, and yet, you can see the benefits of what we're seeing.
So, with that, we would like to open up for any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Ms. Daniels?
So, you mentioned K through 3 has been trained in early childhood coordinators. So, will the teachers, for the 3 teachers, specialized teachers, EL teachers, have been done with it or they're going to be?
Yes. So, by the end of next year, all of our K-5 educators will have completed letters. So, we have a group that is in year one right now, it's a two-year process. So, all of our K-5 classroom teachers, speech-language pathologists, special education, cross-categorical N-Cluster, multilingual teachers, intervention, what else am I missing? We do also have some secondary educators, which will also be required by the Read Act, but we were already in the process with our secondary intervention and special education educators.
Yeah, so we basically have our building covered from K through 5, including any sort of interventionist, multilingual, special education teachers.
Oh, media specialists.
And that will be District 5.
That will be District 5.
Correct.
Matoska, they are one year behind, if I'm remembering correctly.
Some of their, except for kindergarten.
Yes, except for kindergarten. So, they are in year one of letters, the vast majority of Matoska. They'll be in year two next year when most of the district will have completed their letters training.
Yeah, at the end of this year, we'll have 140 educators that have completed letters.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
So, when you mentioned that staff development days were swapped out for student contact days, when we get done training in this great effort, which is, we're so happy, it's happening, will some of those days, they can be swapped back or is that a mature discussion?
Yeah, we know now. Yeah, we actually revert back next school year. And so, having the by and large majority with that. And so having the by and large majority with that afforded us too was that, so letters is four full facilitated days, which was how many professional development days, in essence, we had, and how they were spaced out throughout the year. So what that afforded us is also professional learning collaboration beyond just letters, and then also how do you apply letters? And so we will be able to fit that in next year, it'll be the four dates, but we do revert back to the previous calendar.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You know, the 120 minutes that each student gets. So if a student qualifies for extra help, whatever tier they're in, tier three, tier two, or whether special ed or EL, is that included in the 120, do they get extra?
So we were very deliberate, it's a great question, we were very deliberate about that because past practice would have kids potentially being pulled out during core instruction. And we, we know that that's not what they need, right? And so it is better to have a student in there for the full 120 minutes. And then we've been able to find a way to, if significant intervention is needed, to either push in. So you're seeing a lot more push-in as a model in our district, which I'm very excited about. And we know that there is kids that do need to have some pull-out services. But that is, the 120 for K-3 or the 90 for 4 and 5, that is, you don't touch them.
Just a comment on, you know, looking at the data, I mean, it's just impressive. I just think of the students who must be so thrilled to be learning, right? Like, the excitement that they have over this knowledge. And even in, you know, where there's not, like, just one example, there's a word segmenting for Willow Rain from 22 to 23 spring to the 23, 24 winter. While the green didn't change that much, the red to yellow changed drastically. So you're moving kids up no matter what, even though, you know, we want them in the green. At least we see it happening in all the, in all the areas. And it's just, it's really exciting.
Yeah, and you're seeing, you're seeing kindergarteners who are not, who are not gravitating towards picture books in kindergarten. We have decodable readers, and you see them gravitating towards the decodable reader. Like, it's not a great, I mean, they're, they're okay. It's not like this beautiful picture, whatever, but they're one you can read.
It's exciting.
It's pretty exciting to be able to, like, put these things together. And so those are, some of those really, like, you could just sit there and just kind of watch kids read, and you're just like.
Reward, it's just got to be.
Yeah, it's been fun to hear from families, too. Just talking to a parent a couple of weeks ago and was like, his child is a kindergartner. It was like, she's reading the Cheerios box, like, absolutely reading the Cheerios box, he's just floored by it.
That's really great, I'm very thankful for all the work and everything that you guys have done to help move this along. It's exciting.
Mr. Coji?
So thank you, thank you for sharing. The data is very, very impressive and super exciting. And I'm excited, I'll be excited to see where we go from here. Some of the things that I was thinking about, do we know exactly what has changed other than the time? What exactly has changed with what the teachers are doing to move the students along that quickly? And then is it the new curriculum? Is it the science of reading? Has any of that been applied to the scoped sequence or anything like that? And then I'd be super interested, this is only FastBridge data, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so interested if there's any other data points in seeing this with the other grade levels through progress monitoring and maybe disaggregated also, let's see.
The first part of your question?
Yeah, so the first part around, like, what is it that is making the impact? I think it's a combination of things. I definitely attribute it to a very structured focus on this is our instructional time devoted to reading. And with that, we first, though, started with building teacher knowledge and skills around what do you do with those 120 or 90 minutes? And so what teachers are doing is they're, they're very much explicit and systematic. When we talk about structured literacy, it's very explicit and systematic, which is a shift in coaching, which has come with some other challenges, right, as we shift practices. I think too, curriculum, yes, I believe that it has played a role. Our curriculum evaluation or review team, when we had the decision, do we roll out full K-5 implementation this first year? Or should we consider kind of spacing it out, especially knowing people are still in the midst of letters? It was a resounding, we need to start now because we have this letters learning and our current curriculum would take too much work to shift. So teachers feeling like, I also now have the materials I need to apply my letters learning. I think the work, the instructional leadership of our principals, it's amazing to hear them in our principal meetings, their conversations around phonemic awareness.
I'll give you a little glimpse into, when we really started, when I started to get there, like, let's talk about phonemic awareness. And there was, there wasn't a ton of that going on. And I don't even, it's not even, there's no blame to be had. We have so many teachers that are like, but I don't teach reading, right? Like, I've never been taught how to teach reading. I'm a, I'm a teacher, but I don't know how to teach reading. And that goes K, pre-K 12, really, right? And so there was this hesitancy of our, of our staff to be able to, like, say, you're a reading teacher. But when we dive into that, there's a lot of things to be able to do. Letters help with that. And so it started to come off, this, my work with this started to come off with the fact that, let's talk about phonemic awareness. If sounds are how kids learn how to read, then what are we doing to build that knowledge? And so there was this curriculum called HEGREDE. And HEGREDE is a nice little 10 minutes a day, you do sounding out words and blending and all of this stuff. It was a great entry point of like, it's pretty low stakes, I can do it pretty quickly, and the kids actually kind of like it, right? So we've kind of now taken this ability for people like, oh, I can do this, to really like, supercharge the way that they are teaching now, sounding out words, teaching how to blend things, how to segment things. And that's a result of the letters of learning. So it was, everybody trying to do something kind of like as individual and independent contractors, like, I think this is working, right? And now we know, now we know more. With that came some mourning last year. I'll be very clear, it came at the cost of educators who worked tirelessly, day in, day out, to help kids learn how to read, and then getting mixed results. And then with their learning, through their learning, go like, oh my gosh, I didn't know, I didn't know to do X, Y, and Z, whatever it was, right? And then they're starting to see all the kids that through the years that they like, oh, man, if I just had another three months with you or something. So there was a lot of hard conversations with that. But as, like, we've gotten over the hump into like, okay, well, now we're moving in the right direction. Now we know, to your point about, like, I'd love to be able to see some more data at like 3, 4, 5. It's not going to look the best, but these kids are now matriculating up through our system. But another really, that, a point that really got me this past year was talking to our fourth-grade teachers, and their results, like, through FastBridge were like, it's okay. And one of our teachers, and she stopped me and she said, but our kids have never felt more confident writing. And I would say that that's a part of some of the time that we've devoted, and also the curriculum that is building in that writing time. And to have kids feel confident about writing when they didn't in that first, it's huge. Because then we know that the encoded, like, you need to be able to encode in order to read, like, it just goes hand in hand. That was really critical to see. So I can walk away knowing that my fourth grade is in really good hands because they are starting to become learners, readers, writers.
I think what's important to point out, everything Matt talked about, I was thinking about, is that, you know, that phrase you talk about collective efficacy, right, and it has a high impact. I think that that really has been a key in all of this, is there's been so much of a we. Like, we are all learning this, every classroom teacher, special education intervention, M L, principal, instructional coach. We are all in it, learning it at the same time, like, helping each other. There's such a collective mindset right now and collaboration. I feel that culture shift in that way, because we all have something that we're really grabbing on to together and learning and growing together.
Thank you, thank you both. Kudos to Willow as well. Dr. Arcand?
The only question we have is, it's really great, how are you sharing this with parents? And you're bringing them on board so they kind of know what you're doing so that, because they can be another partner at home when the kids are doing it? How is that happening?
So system-wide, we do have a monthly communication that goes out to parents, and there'll be a specific literacy topic, and that'll be ways that they can support their child at home. The other piece we worked on system-wide is, so we have a system called EduClimber, which is really our data warehouse. And it has this feature called SmartForms that we can set up, and it pulls student data and puts it in the smart form. And then we worked on structuring to really talk about, what does that assessment result mean for your child? What are some ways you can support your child at home? And then all of our elementary schools went over that with families at parent-teacher conferences, which I think there was a little nervousness with educators initially, like, to be going over that data. And then what we heard was overwhelmingly positive about how having that structured format and really being able to engage in those conversations with families. So that's a couple of ideas from system-wide.
Yeah, well, I would say, you know, that's born out of the REACT, right? And so, so we're being very deliberate about, okay, your kid is here, here are the things that you can do at home. But then it's all of the communication that we're doing, the tiny bits of homework that we're sending to kids, the decodable readers, the, as a title school, some of the ways that we are giving kids books, material, curriculum, and then having parents work with that. So it is something that we're communicating with on a regular basis, you know, so we're meeting the spirit of the REACT, but then it's also the little things that we're doing on a daily basis that are allowing parents to be a part of that. I do think, to your point, the next big thing is like, how are parents informing us what they would like to see, right? And I think we have to have more of those conversations. Thank you, yeah.
Ms. Daniels?
One more question, I have an opinion question. With all your work and then thinking about the REACT and thinking about teacher training and colleges and Matt's sort of comments about that some teachers, not all teachers, some teachers still, like, they didn't have the right training. So as administrators and people in this world, are you thinking that colleges are hearing this? And the state, obviously, the legislative torts have heard it. And, you know, I look back, I mean, when I was first a teacher in 1978, a long time ago, but we had Port and Gillingham that we were trained in, which is, you know, still around, but had some of those components, but only if you were a special education teacher did you get that. So just, Marley, are colleges going to, do you think?
Yeah, well, I think there's been some legislative action on that. So I also work with a local university, and I know for their accreditation, Pelsby has gone through with a fine-tooth comb in all of their coursework, and so I've helped them respond to that. So I know I'm seeing some action happening. I think just like at moments where we have also faced, is that shifting of mindsets and beliefs, right? So if this is the way you've been teaching for years and years, and you have a sense of that it's been working to some degree, sometimes that's harder to switch. So I think there are also that whole change management piece. But I'm at least seeing some steps toward action and really clearly laying out that they must align with the science of reading.
I think higher education needs to do a better job of listening to teachers. I do, because I do think that there is a disconnect a little bit. And depending on what program teachers are coming out of, might have their abilities heightened or kind of setback a little bit. So I know that there's this, a little bit of a disconnect, I feel like, between public education and higher education. It's a good question, though.
Thank you so much for all your work, much appreciated. Discussion item B3, fiscal year 2024-25 budget adjustments. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Allison, members of the board, Dr. Casimir, check. At the February 12th, 2024 school board meeting, the board approved the revised 23, 24 school year budget and the projected 24, 25 budget. A key budget goal that we have is to maintain or to get to and then maintain that 8% fund balance, as identified in our fund balance policy. We noted at that time that we would need to identify $1.4 million in increased revenues and decreased expenditures in order to work toward that fund balance policy in the future. And so we were tasked with coming to you tonight and identifying how we would do that. Go on to the next one. You've seen this graph, that one.
I'm trying, sorry.
It's sticky.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm going to get you now.
There we go.
All right, you've seen this graph before, and the blue line represents where the general education formula allowance would be if it had kept pace with inflation since 2003. And the orange line represents where the actual general formula allowance has, you know, is, or has been over those last 22 years. You also see what the budgetary impact would be for us in terms of revenue, $11,206,000. And we've shown you that number over a number of years, and that has significantly increased that gap, has significantly increased over the last five years, as we've seen. Years of higher inflation, but the funding formula hasn't kept pace with that inflation. School districts have faced significant challenges during that time. Because of it, I've had to turn, in some cases, to local revenue sources, including operating levies in order to close that gap. This lack of, or this gap in funding has had major long-term impact on school district budgets, and will continue to, we'll see over the next several years, the school districts are challenged long-term by the challenges of the last several years. And so we've seen districts with staffing challenges, had to really work hard to get people to come work for them. Oftentimes, that's resulted in significantly increased salaries, and that's going to play over year after year and really create some challenges for school districts. And it's played out in the, in their agreements with their, at the negotiating table. Now, the legislative, this past legislative session, we saw funding increases of 4% and 2%, which were significantly more than the 4% anyways than what we've seen in many years. However, it still was significantly below the rate of inflation. And so as our expenses go up in this human industry of education, those expenses and inflation really impacts us. So along with, there came new requirements. And while many of those requirements we would, we would agree with, they're not funded fully. And some legislators have suggested they've been partially funded, or they've been temporarily funded, or not funded at all. And so that gap will continue to impact school districts in really significant ways. This chart, as we've experienced that funding gap, just like other districts in the state, we've been at the table year after year, really adjusting the expenditure side of our budget. And this is a five-year history of those, a total of $12.7 million over those five years. If you look at the top half of this chart, you see those reductions that impacted departments that are really operational or administrative in nature. About 54% of those cuts, we've, or adjustments, some are revenue, some are budget reductions. About 54% in those non-school programs. And then the bottom half, 46% really are those reductions that have had more direct impact on schools.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can I, Mr. Coji? Does that chart show the cuts that have been made to those areas?
Those are reductions, or in some cases, finance tools, or shifting funds out of the general fund into other revenue sources.
So the $2 million at the elementary level, we've cut that much over, really?
Over five years. And remember that our elementary and secondary staff is really the core, largest part of our budget.
Thank you.
It's you. Okay, so now we'll walk through, we're able to get to that, we talked about 1.4 million on the revenue side and the expenditure side. And we're able to get to that tonight and really more of it on the revenue side as we've dug really deep into our assumptions within our budget. And we'll start at the top with transportation. And so we've analyzed and projected future invoices from our contractors. And we've been able to, or we've identified that as we move some routes away from contractors and kept more routes in-house, that we've been able to reduce expenditures to our contractors and we just run more efficiently that way. And so we, we believe we're going to see $418,000 in savings in transportation. So keeping more of those in-house as we can and avoiding use of third-party providers as much as we can. Within special education revenue, this is a revised assumption on revenue and it's based on the most recent MDE calculations. The most challenging part of developing the budget is identify or projecting what that specialized revenue is going to be. And we know that what we project isn't going to be right because we don't know who's going to be walking in our doors next year. But as we get more projections from MDE over time, we're able to sharpen that a little bit. And so we've projected an additional $300, $300,000 in specialized revenue for '24-'25 than we originally had in our budget in February. Secondary staffing, this is aligning our staffing to projected enrollment. We'll see a slight decrease in the numbers of students we're serving in our elementary schools, but we'll also be more efficient than we are with our split campus high school. And so there's some courses where we've had to make decisions on running a small elective course that we offer in both buildings. And now we're going to, we'll have critical mass where we may not be, we may be able to run that course, but it won't have to be as small as it was. And so we're just more efficient with a combined campus. We're seeing about $300,000 reduction in expenditures at the secondary level. At elementary, we will staff at the same class size ratio that we have for many years, which is 23.5 students per teacher across the district. And that may look a little bit different from building to building. Our smaller schools can be very difficult to get, you know, really close to that 23.5. Some schools might be a little bit higher, some might be a little bit lower. We maintain the same targets as well. So we talk targets, that's a range that we're trying to get at a grade level. And so you look at second grade, the target is, we want to see those sections between 22 and 25. It doesn't mean we won't be lower sometimes, or maybe there might be a time when we're high. But we, that's the target we're trying to stay in. And so as an example, across the district, we have 26 sections of second grade and they'll average 22.3 students per section. Two schools will actually be below the target is what, unless things change. But right now, it looks like, well, two schools that are slightly below that target and those schools that'll be above it. Or some that'll be closer to the top of that range in second grade. Some schools are, have multi-age scenarios in second and third grade or first and second where that's able to maintain, class sizes below that top of that target. And so principals, you know, really work hard within their buildings to identify opportunities to be efficient. Savings of 262.5. In buildings and grounds, we spent some time analyzing our projected energy expenses and we adjusted based on the most current projections for energy costs in our region. And we think we, we're going to see some savings of about $235,000 from original projections. Investment revenue, we're, market conditions have improved pretty, pretty well over the last quarter, the last two quarters. And so we're increasing what we think our investment revenue would be around $100,000 or increasing it by $100,000. Clerical staffing, savings here of $65,000, reflex adjustments at both the elementary and secondary level. At the secondary level, we, it's not actually a person whose position is being cut. We had actually approved an addition of a clerical position at the high school and we had built that into our budget that we brought to you in February 12. Since then, as we've done this work, we decided that, that we're not going to add that position at the secondary. So from our budget perspective, it shows as a cut, but there's not a person in our position that we're cutting. At the elementary school, we worked with elementary principals to identify what the average clerical staffing per student is in their building, just to create a standard across buildings. And we found some, some surprises in that, that some buildings were staffed quite a bit higher than others clerical. So we were able to make some reductions in those buildings. And then we identified some buildings that were below what, what the average was. And so we're able to add some clerical in those buildings. And so what we have now is a reduction of about eight hours across the nine elementary buildings. But buildings that were really underserved from a clerical perspective are now up to that number and others are consistent across the district. So that's our total of 1,681 about in adjustments, which was, exceeds what we set out to do. So we've, we've been working hard at it.
Can I ask a quick question out of curiosity? Chair?
Yeah, Dr. Arcan.
When I look at the secondary $300,000, I'm making the assumption that you've included Bennys in that. So are we talking about four F full-time positions approximately, depending on your, what you're cutting from?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then what does this mean for us big-picture-wise in our budget? So we've included in here the summary document of our revenues and expenses and then also included in the package is a little more detailed version. So this is, is the outlook for our school district for the next two years based on these budgeted adjustments being incorporated into the budget. So if you look at the projected 24-25 column, for example, you can see our revenues are now predicted to be at $142 million and then expenditures at $141. So we are coming out with more revenues than expenses for next school year of about $587,000. And then again, we always focus on that unassigned fund balance, so the line in blue, that puts us at about $10.8 million, which brings our fund balance percentage up to 7.7. So we're seeing that growth from the seven and a half percent for this current school year to a projected 7.7 for next year. And then with our target being that we maintain the school board policy of 8% fund balance for the '25-'26 school year, to get to the 8% fund balance, it's, it would mean budget adjustments for that school year of about $2.5 million. So because we were able to identify more than the 1.4 that we were talking about last month, there's a little bit benefit there because we were looking at about 2.7 last month, so it's better. We do feel that, you know, as we, as operations finalize for this school year, we're hopeful that that's going to be a little bit better. We do have some work cut out for us in the future with that comes to fruition.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
I just, oh, sorry. I just thank you again for, you know, having to do all of that. And I know it's not something that you look forward to having to do or then thinking of what we have looking ahead. Hopefully, hopefully, things can change and you don't have to, you don't have to look at that number. It can go down.
Mr. Strife.
So is that for next, that adjustment that we were just looking at? Is that for next?
Yeah, for next school year.
And is there a process for that? Is it, how, how has it been done in the past when you're looking at that much money? Like, are you pulling together folks from the community? Are you pulling together staff? How do you make those reductions? How do you, do you start with administrators? Does it look different every time? I don't, I don't know what the process is for.
I would say it looks a little bit different every time. We start with, with administrators and really like, within the leadership team of where, where do we see possibilities? It's always best if you really work hard on the revenue side of it, make sure that your, your revenue projections are as good as, as they can be. And then as, as we work on reductions, you know, when you sit around a table and ask people where the reduction should be, everyone touches their goals, right? And so in the past, we've had, we've approached department leaders and given them a target to hit. And so when you look, go back to that slide, you know, where we saw, where we saw those reductions across the top half, those are some really difficult decisions because we're trying to just keep those out of the classroom as much as possible. And so we made some, you know, challenging decisions here. Are there more creative ways we can, or different revenue sources that we can use for different salaries and positions we really need to keep, but we can pay for all the different revenue source?
And when do we start making those changes, those adjustments to, like, FTEs or whatever it's coming from? If it's not FTEs programming or whatever, when does that start to come up in the spring?
Well, yeah, we do the, you know, we get our, we really want to work through our audit, right? Because we have really solid numbers after the audit and that informs a lot of the decisions that we have to make. And look through the data that we have on, in the audit of how our money was spent, where, where we perhaps overspent, underspent, where revenues were high, where they were low. And start making decisions at that point. Last few years, our audits have been late, so we want to move those audits up, try to get to you in December instead of January with our audits.
Ms. Daniels.
Can you talk a little bit about the revised assumption, MDE for special ed, $200,000? Is that because we have a few kids who are subsidy, I mean, just we're, is that what you're implying?
So the special ed revenue is incredibly difficult to predict. It's entirely based on prior year expenses and those still aren't finalized on MDE's side for fiscal '23 even. And so we took another deep dive on what we did know and found there are some new data points that we were able to do another calc. So based on the most recent data from the Department of Ed, we felt that our revenue budget was a little bit under where we thought we would end up. So thought it was prudent to just increase our revenue based on that calculation. So if I ran it again, probably next week, it could be different. But this is the most up-to-date data that we have.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. So we'll move into our first operational item C1, action on fiscal year '24-'25 budget adjustments that we just heard. Mr. Wall?
Yep, I'll take this. Yep. So as we just went over the budget adjustments and we had time for discussion, the recommended action at this point is to approve the FY '24-25 budget adjustments as recommended.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Daniels with a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any further discussion or questions? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And then operational item C2, approval of fiscal year '25 long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Spring 22, Section 123B dot 595. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah. So as Shelby had mentioned earlier this evening, the action item for this year related to the upcoming bond issuance is to approve the LTFM plan again. So you've seen this many times. We do this every July. And then anytime that we issue facilities maintenance bonds, we have to come to you and update this again based on the current market, market conditions. So they put together, at LRAS, put together that pre-sale report based on that. We've updated this just a little bit so that it ties out to the numbers that we, the revenue that we're expected to receive on our upcoming bond issuance. So the recommended action is that you approve the FY '25 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Section 123P dot 595.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcan and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.